Councilwoman Harris, will you give us that prayer?
Lord, we're coming for you this afternoon, oh God. Just want to thank you, Lord, for another day.
Yes.
Thank you for your goodness and all your mercy, oh God, because you sure been good. And you've been so merciful, Lord. Lord, we give you glory this afternoon. We give you honor, and we give you praise, oh God, because it's in your name, oh God, that we live and move and have our being, oh God. Give us that love that run from heart to heart and breast to breast, oh God. Cover us with your blood in this meeting, oh God. Wrap us in your love, oh God. Let us stay focused, oh God, as our American team to take this city forward, oh God. Bind the devil in this election, oh God. Cast him out, oh God. Use the rod of correction, oh God. Lord, every snake out there, Lord, suck him up, oh God, in the name of Jesus. Lord, we bless you right now, God. We lift you up right now, God. Lord, we praise you right now, God, because there's nobody like you. Nobody like you, oh God. Nobody can do what you do. Nobody can do what you do, God. Nobody loves us like you love us, oh God. So give us that love that run from heart and breast to breast, and stop talking about each other and bringing each other down and trying to find lies. It's not right, oh God, in the name of Jesus. Do your work in this city, God. Do your work in this city, God. Cover this city with your blood. Bind every evil thought. Bind every evil demon. Bless our police force, oh God. Bless our fire department, oh God. Keep them safe, oh God, as they go in and out through this city, oh God. Lord, we lift you up in this city. Cover this city with your blood. Fill it with your love. Wrap it in your mercy, oh God. Save and deliver in this city, oh God. Lord, you do what you have to do in this city, oh God, and we continue to give you the glory, the honor, and the praise. Continue to encourage our America. Lift them up, oh God. Don't let them look down on nothing. Let them stay focused on you, God. And you wrap them up, oh God. You keep them safe, oh God. Lord, you protect them in every way he has to go. Everything he touch, oh God, let it work, oh God, in the name of Jesus. And we give you glory right now, and we give you honor, and we give you praise, because it's in your name, oh God, that we live, we move, and have our being. And we thank you right now, Lord, in Jesus' name.
Let's remain standing and face the flag for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. None of the colleagues me to order. Mr. City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Okay, Mayor McClintock.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Suda. City Treasurer Suda. Councilmember Bruce.
Here.
Councilmember Cat.
Here.
Councilmember Crum.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Hope.
Here.
Councilmember Hutchinson.
Here.
Councilmember Mohammed.
Present.
Councilmember Monday. Councilmember Monday. Councilmember Mary.
Here.
Councilmember Wheeler.
Here.
Nine out of ten.
We have nine out of ten present. Also, I'm going to ask you all to keep our city treasurer in your prayers. He had a surgery. He's getting better now, hopefully. But just keep Charlie Suda in your prayers. Bid openings.
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to table this for two weeks. I think the bid may be too specific and not follow within state statute. And like I say, just want to double check that and make sure that we're following all the rules.
Make a motion that we postpone it or table it.
He made the motion. He asked for a second. Second. So it'll be come back in two weeks.
I mean, if we get a definitive answer on it Friday or Monday, and we happen to meet for some reason before then, we'll address it real quickly, but I'm just concerned that we might have pushed that a little too far.
City Attorney, you want to speak on it?
Well, I don't think it hurts unless there's some reason that it has to be done before two weeks to take a look at it. I had not looked at it until today, and I understand councilman, councilperson Cat's concern. So I don't think it hurts to wait two weeks unless I'm told otherwise by somebody in that department.
Do you guys have any questions?
Mr. Jackson.
Yes, sir. Mr. Cat, what can I answer?
Again, my concern with state statute, and I cannot quote it to you, but I know in years past, we have never been that descriptive in bidding a unit. A pickup truck traditionally pickup eight cylinder turbocharged. That's fine. It's a very broad statement, and everybody has an opportunity to bid. But I believe this one was written rather specific.
Well, I think those were just some guidelines. The truck that they bid wasn't any of those that were in your packet after all, because a lot of these companies, we pretty much had to beg them to even bid, because no one wants to tie a truck up for however long it's going to take to get processed, check, and all that. So we actually talked to them yesterday. They had this truck that they bid. It wasn't any of those others. It met the guidelines as far as we could tell. That was the only bid that we had.
It met all the specifications that you had?
Probably not.
Okay.
No. Because I don't know how any one truck could meet that, and like you said, unless it was specific to one, which we had no idea. And again, the two trucks that I think were pictured and specified weren't the truck at all.
All right, but since we wrote these specific guidelines, why not just reject the bid then?
Because we only had one bid. We need a truck.
I know, but you requested a very specific vehicle.
I had no reason to be that specific.
Okay.
I wasn't, certainly wasn't because they had a truck that we wanted. I did like the idea that it was a local Ford dealer.
I agree.
And I liked, I did talk to another dealer in Memphis. They had one. And I tried to convince them they should bid, but they didn't.
Okay.
And again, West Memphis Ford, we had to, let's say, encourage them to even bid on this one. If you want to wait two weeks.
These specific guidelines, I would assume that either you reject the bid or consider approving it. But maybe that will keep you out of any issues with an auditor. I'm not for sure.
And I will also say, if you don't mind, we did look on state bid to see what was available.
Right.
There wasn't anything available. We didn't need a new truck.
Correct.
We, it's a work truck. We beat it pretty good with tents and trailers and bleachers and whatever it is. But the main thing I needed was a four door, a crew cab.
Correct.
Because I got three, a couple of them pretty good size, and we have a single cab right now.
I agree with the four door use. You have to have it with many people. It's going to be in and out of it.
You could buy a single cab anymore.
Yeah. But you don't need a single cab.
And the truck has, even this truck has a lot of miles on it, but that's okay, too.
It's not under the 75?
It's right at 75.
Okay.
So that I can, you did bid. Are you saying that you all actually did bid on this one, or?
Yes, A and P.
I'm just, look, that's okay. I just want to make sure that I understood.
Yes, we opened bids at noon yesterday.
Okay, okay.
And we had one bid from Ford of West Memphis, and I believe that's in your packet.
This is what, I'm just making certain that this is what I read. And when you said we actually did not bid on the one that we, I kind of got a little bit confused.
No, I'm saying that the one they offered the bid on wasn't the one that was specified in this packet.
Oh, okay.
At the time when we wrote the packet, we had gone online and had some idea of what was available out there. But the truck that they bid wasn't any of those specifications. They had some, obviously, but it wasn't. We had no desire to pick a particular truck. If I had have done that, then A and P probably would have considered to say and go buy a new one with exactly what you want. And they did approve this, up to $50,000. And it came in, as you saw, well under that.
All right, well, since the truck you bid, or the one you received to bid on, did not meet specs in the first place, I'll withdraw the motion.
Do you draw your second?
So. So let me, let me ask this question. When we, and I think we've had this discussion, when we bid on this used vehicle, how did that, I know that the specs were very detailed, even to the point that it said no warranty on these two trucks that were in this bid package. And one of them specified a radio and one didn't have a radio. But what? Counselor Cat, do you see, and I know you said that the state has particular bidding processes?
We cannot write a bid that is so specific, only one person could actually meet that those requirements. From my standpoint, even though this was a very specific bid, the bid that they received does not meet these requirements. It is not the vehicle they spec. It's less it. And I'm also, I hate to use the word quality, but it's amenities.
So, I mean, we purchased lots of new vehicles.
Most of our purchases, and I'm sure Kenneth is probably here or on the state.
State bid list.
Yeah. There was none available. So, I mean, I understand their unique position. It was just this one, to me, on the surface appeared to be bordering violation of the statute.
So with your motion, you want to table it for two weeks?
No.
No, baby. Just off of this conversation, and it doesn't meet the bid package anyhow, I withdraw that motion.
Okay, okay. All right.
So.
I'll withdraw by second.
Okay, you got a second. All right, can I get a motion second to refer it back to A and P?
So moved.
Second. All of them by. Oppose. It goes back to you.
Appreciate y'all. Tell you what, I don't know where you are, but I'll stand up here because I could probably answer some questions about the ordinance you got on there, too, if you need me to. I don't know if you did that one yet.
Oh, I think that'll be rather routine.
I would stand there myself. You're coming back up. Yeah, you're coming back up.
No.
Turn it back to dispositions for administration.
Well, then the correction to the minutes.
Motion to approve this minute.
All of them by.
Aye.
Oppose. The minutes are approved. We had no old business. We got one item of new business. Ms. Mohammed, would you give me a motion for title only?
I make a motion that we read all one by title only.
Second.
Second.
All of them by.
Aye.
Oppose. City Attorney?
It's an ordinance to authorize Alderman and members of the city council to purchase services from Ethel Williams, doing businesses, chemistry, for musical entertainment for the city of West Memphis and for other purposes.
Can I get a motion in seconds for the suspended rules to places on the second reading?
So moved. Second.
All of them by.
Aye.
Oppose. City Attorney?
It's an ordinance to authorize Alderman and members of the city council to purchase services from Ethel Williams, doing business as chemistry for musical entertainment for the city of West Memphis and for other purposes.
Can I get a motion in second to forth to suspend the rules and places on this third and final reading?
So moved.
All of them by.
Aye.
Oppose.
It's an ordinance to authorize Alderman and members of the city council to purchase services from Ethel Williams, doing business as chemistry for musical entertainment for the city of West Memphis and for other purposes.
Having it here for the third time, can we get a motion in second to approve?
So moved.
Second. Let me give a little explanation to the audience about this. Basically, what this is, when you have someone that works for the city or contractual with the city in order for them to do business with the city, they need an ordinance from the city council to continue doing their work to keep us in line with the auditors. All right.
Mr. Jackson?
Well, we didn't finish, sir. I'm sorry. Have we finished this? We haven't finished this yet.
I thought we'd finished it.
No, sir.
This discussion, in the other discussion?
This is the, that's why I'm breaking it up.
Chemistry, right? Chemistry.
Yes, sir.
Thought the record is a chemistry. Okay, okay.
I'm sorry, chemistry. Chemistry.
Okay. So.
Is Jack?
You have a question?
Oh.
Yes, sir. Maybe best, might be Ms. Perry, since Ethel is coworkers with Ms. Perry.
Yeah, she worked, Ethel works for the finance department, she's a city accountant, and she has a band. So she recently performed for A and P at the state cookoff.
Could I ask what type of music? She does R and B, the kind that I hire. And what had happened is I had, I found out that she wasn't entertainer as well as a city employee, and I hired her for the state cookoff. In the meantime, realized that she probably would need to have this ordinance passed. So I talked to the city attorney and Stephanie. But this was the time, the way the months worked, we had a long time between the two meetings. So she actually has already performed for the city Saturday, but I hope to hire her again in the future, and maybe other departments might want to, too. She did a really good job. She had a really good band, and I enjoyed her. And she knows her numbers, too. She's an accountant. Yeah, she's the accountant. She's, she's, she's real quiet at the. She's not on the stage. Commission meetings.
And Jim, I think she's rated Elf for family, so it is no other type of music.
Family music?
Yeah.
Thank you, Jim. Okay. You're welcome.
It's the end of more discussion. Here now, all of them by.
Aye.
Oppose. All right, that passes. Mr. City Clerk, would you get that ordinance a number, please?
The number would be 2614. 2614.
The number is 2614. All right, we're going to move down to permission request. I have a contract asking for permission for me to sign the revised contract for Rubicon. Public Works talked about this in their meeting a couple of days ago, and they approved it. Ms. Mohammed, did you want to speak on this?
No, I don't, and I don't see any members from Public Works here today. Kenneth Johnson may want to say a little bit about the additional cameras that we need. I believe your name was brought up in the discussion this past Tuesday. If you don't mind coming up, Mr. Johnson.
Well, I would ask that. I don't know anything about it.
Oh, you don't know, okay. Ms. Perry.
So Ms. Paulina said that after the original contract in May was signed, she realized that they had 16 camera holders, but they didn't actually have 16 cameras. And so she went back and she asked them to add the cameras. Well, because it was an increase in money and the contract was going to change, that's why we have to do a permission request for him to re-sign the contract because the amount has changed. So the original amount was like $33,000, and then it has went up to 38.
With $4,603 monthly for three years.
Well, annually. So it's been up annually. Annually. So that's why the contract is being brought back to you guys, because the amount increased, because of the cameras.
But every vehicle is equipped now.
Yes.
Thank you.
Do we already have them, or are we going to order them?
I think they're going to be ordered.
Right, that's, I think that was what we discussed in the meeting Tuesday, that they are going to be ordered. Of course, Mayor McClintock was at the meeting as well, as well as the commission members, Mr. Wheeler, Mr. Hope, and Mr. Monday, and we did approve. So I would like to give, make that motion for the mayor to go ahead.
Okay. We got a motion from Mrs. Mohammed. Can I get a second?
Second.
All of them by.
Aye.
Oppose. Permission is granted. Committee reports, we're going to start with police.
Okay, police. We have September 1st, September 19th, 2022. The meeting was called to order at 12 o'clock PM. The positions, 71 out of 80 positions filled. Our drug task force has been successful in a sizable drug bust. Retention rate at the police department seems to have leveled off. There have been no lost officers for the last two months. And attending the meeting, Major Taylor and Lieutenant Kennedy was to create a plan to fix our communication system. That was supposed to be submitted to us on this month, but now it'll be next month. The meeting was adjourned at 12:35. We also had a meeting Monday, October 3rd, and I don't have it printed up, but it mirrors this. The numbers didn't change. And we discussed the areas that they were focusing on, speeding, loud noises, what have you. And they've been doing a better job on that. And also discussing the communication system. Not only to fix the one that we have in place, but a backup. So they are supposed to have that for us in the next meeting, in the report.
Thank you. I also want to commend our police department. 71 out of 80 officers has been one of the highest points we have been in a long, long time, even before my administration. So I commend them on being able to retain officers and show good leadership to keep those officers there. Councilwoman Mohammed, did you want to do Public Works right now?
Right. Public Works met Tuesday, October 4th. Commission members present, Charles Wheeler, James Holt, Willis Monday, Lorraine Mohammed. Commission members absent, Melanie Hutchinson. Others, hmm?
I'm not on, I'm not on Public Works, Ms. Mohammed. So for your records, if you want to correct that, just so for your records, it won't have me as being absent. I'm not on Public Works.
You're not on it?
No, ma'am.
Who's on it?
I'm not on it.
Okay, it has to be, you are Mr. Mr.
I was taken off Public Works.
Okay, so we'll discuss this. Yes, ma'am, but I just, for your record, as having me absent, I know I didn't want that on there, but go ahead and give your, give your report, and we can discuss this afterward.
Well, I was giving your name. I'm so very sorry. It's nothing against you. I was just giving your name as a reminder. And every time we have a meeting, I do text you that we are having the meeting.
And I told you a couple of months ago that I'm not on Public Works.
Okay, okay. We'll, we'll talk about it. We'll.
Yes, ma'am.
We'll get that clear. Do you know who's actually on it, Mayor McClintock? Because Mr. Mr.
I will get that information and make sure that we have everyone.
I'll bring, I'll bring everybody up to speed on the discussion, so maybe we can remember what we said.
Okay, if you're not on it, I'll take, I will delete that. It's, it's nothing that pertinent. I'll take that off. I was just told that you were, and that was it. Other members present were Mayor Marco McClintock, Ms. Paulina Hensley, Public Works, Mr. Reverend Arthur Jackson, Mr. Wayne Crum, city council member, Mr. George Phillips, code enforcement officer. Absent were members of the press. There were no new business on the agenda to discuss. However, Mr. Councilman Wayne Crum discussed concerns about the Reading Street Bridge, and there was much discussion on this topic. If you'd like to say a little bit about what you talked about.
Well, what we, what we were trying to get at was, on the northwest quadrant of the city, we've got two bridges. We got the Rich Road Bridge. It's went out of commission this year. And the Reading Street Bridge has been out demoed for four and a half years. So we were trying to get a clarification on those two bridges, and that came through the RDOT out of Wynn, who services our district over here. The Rich Road Bridge is on, in the design phase right now. The Reading Street Bridge, in pre-council, I was explaining that they don't have the Reading Street Bridge on the 80/20 list, which means it's not up for replacement. So we were talking about the idea that, there was some discussion before our, our NPO director left, that that bridge, the Reading Street Bridge, may end up being a pedestrian bridge instead of a street bridge. But then that hasn't been decided, so the Reading Street Bridge is out of commission until we decide what we're going to do with it.
Okay. Thank you so very, very much. And of course, we had no city engineer to bring forth the report, but I think we will have a report at our next meeting, because Mayor McClintock has, I believe, taken care of all of that. The new business, the commission voted to refer the revised contract to the Rubicon contract to the city council. And of course, we just got the mayor to approve that, signing of that just a few moments ago. Our fleet report, there were, there are three front end loaders operational and nine are down. Four rear end loaders are operational and nine are down. One, one, one are abandoned, two, the one are abandoned, rather, two operational and nine down. Five grapple trucks are operational and nine down. And of course, there was much discussion about hiring additional mechanics to ensure that the trucks are up and running on a regular basis. And I believe that there was discussion by Mr. Jackson, Reverend Jackson, that they are in the process of hiring mechanics. Now, I think they hired one, but he may have been sick or something of that nature. So we're trying to get the mechanics onboard, so we can ensure that our trucks are taken care of the way they should be, so our citizens can get the service that they most certainly deserve, a service that they are paying for every month. So we are working on that as hard and as heavy as we possibly can. There were 13,440 pounds of recycling, and 1,763 tires were collected. Reverend Jackson stated that he has most certainly put a stop to some of the tires being dumped at the site on weekends and other places, because they did catch one person who was dumping, and he approached that person, and of course, it was a very friendly encounter. The gentleman said that he didn't know that he wasn't supposed to dump his tires. He thought it was just for anybody. But Reverend Jackson explained that it's not for a business to bring 75 or 100 tires to the dumpster at one time. So with that being said, maybe we will not have this many tires being collected in the future. There was no city engineer's report. The code enforcement officer did give a report, and I've got to get his minutes from that report. I don't have that on today. That ends my report for the Public Works meeting. And of course, we did have a fire commission meeting, I believe, and Chief Ely. I don't have that report. Do you mind coming up and speaking a little bit on what we talked about?
I don't have the itinerary in front of me.
Okay.
But I can do it at the next meeting if you need me to.
Okay, all right. That'll be fine. I will probably do it at the next meeting. I do apologize. My mind has been going through so much. I had two brothers in the hospital at the same time. One was in ICU, and the other one did pass away, so I'm still kind of grieving from that. So I ask for your forgiveness for not having that report ready. So this ends my report on the Public Works.
All right. Thank you. Also, I just wanted to add for the Public Works that Philip Sorrell is the new city engineer, for the public's sake.
And the NPO director.
NPO, yeah, we.
Mayor, I'd like to bring up something with this Public Works. I have brought it up twice in Public Works meeting. And if we don't get that debris moved out from under the bridge from, by Stedland School, with this high water, we're going to have another bridge out. I don't know who's responsible for that, but it's a lot of debris out there, and the high water will push against those batteries, and they will collapse.
Thank you, Councilman Holt. The personnel meet?
Personnel meet?
Airport, budget, budget chairman?
We met on the 22nd of September, but I do not have the summary of the reports yet.
Okay. Did I miss any other committees or commissions?
Of course, you know, A and P will give ours at the next meeting, because we, we did not have a quorum for last week. We will give up at the next meeting.
All right. Can I get a motion in second to add the charity day funds to the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All of them by.
Aye.
Oppose. I have some. Councilman Quorum and Councilwoman Hutchinson have some. I saw my, I want to give $1,000 to Labana Hospital. And 500. and five hundred to Crenden County Warriors.
Mayor, I wanna give some too.
Um, to answer that question, I'm not sure, but so many of our kids here in West Memphis go to Labana.
I know. I was just wondering. I was told it years ago that it had to stay within the city of West Memphis. That if it's charity money, it's supposed to stay within the city of West Memphis.
Well, I, I confirm to City Attorney to make sure that we have to do that. I just want, I know they was here and helping kids and we went to all the schools and I just want a real blessing to them. All right, so I confirm to City Attorney, if it's legal, we'll go ahead, but if it's not, then we, I come back. Uh, Councilwoman Hutchinson?
Yes, sir. I would like to donate a possible five hundred to the Jaguar Football Team. Uh, that would be Earl R. Jackson Enrichment Center, care of the girls club, but it's the Jaguar Football Team, five hundred. And I also would like to give five hundred to Ecumenical Village. And that'll be it for this charity.
Okay, five hundred to the Ja, to Jaguars, uh, Earl R. Jackson.
Right, right.
And five hundred to Ecumenical Village. Also for mine, I had a thousand dollars going to Labana Children's Hospital, but we have verified with the City Attorney to make sure that it is legal to do that. And five hundred to the Crenden County Warriors. Uh, uh, hold on, let me do Councilwoman Corum, Dr. Bruce. Councilwoman Corum?
You ladies ready? Okay. Uh, Eighth Street Mission, five hundred dollars. Faith International Youth Ministry, five hundred dollars. Youth Ministry. And the Henry Bell Charity, one thousand dollars.
All right, you got that, uh, eight, five hundred to Eighth Street Ministry, five hundred to, uh, Faith International and the one thousand two, do?
Yeah.
Henry Bell. Who is, who is Henry Bell?
Charity.
Charity. Do we have, uh, five one C three on all those? Okay.
We've given to them before.
Dr. Bruce?
Okay, I'd like to give five hundred dollars to Ecumenical Village and the remainder of it to One City Boys and Girls Club.
Five hundred to Ecumenical Village and the remaining balance to the One City Boys Club, Boys and Girls Club, I'm sorry. Uh, was there anyone else that wants to?
Mr. Willis.
Mr. Willis?
I'd like to give, uh, donate Henry Bell, uh, the Henry Bell Open, five hundred dollars. Boys and Girls Clubs of West Memphis, Arkansas, the difference of my money. Please.
Five hundred dollars to Henry Bell Foundation and the remainder balance to the the, uh, West Crenden County Boys and Girls.
Boys and Girls Club there on Missouri. Thank you.
All right, uh, can I, is there anyone else? Can I get a motion in a second to approve?
Someone.
Second.
All the favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? It passes. Uh, Mr. Clerk, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanna remind you all, of course, I don't think Ms. Mohammed and Dr. Bruce was in the room when I mentioned it. But, um, Ms. Torres, she emailed everyone the monthly report yesterday and it, it will be on your city email today. Okay, well, it was this morning when she emailed that thing. And so she did bring the hard copy to be filed in the clerk's office. I just wanted everybody to know, because I don't think Dr. Bruce, Ms. Mohammed was here when I made the statement.
All right. You had no presentation? You had no announcement?
I had, I had an announcement, Mayor.
Go ahead.
If I can. Um, I would just like to make a, um, a point of saying, uh, oftentimes council members are asked, what is it that we do, uh, when we're, when we're not doing particularly what some of, some people think we should? But I would like to make a public, um, plea in that some of the things we do, we don't always announce, which in, brings me to the point of, uh, October being Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Um, some of, some of the people that we're in touch with, the lives that we, uh, I wanna, I wanna use these words correctly, but the lives that we work with and touch on a daily basis, it's not always public. Um, it's, it can be private. So in lieu of violence, if someone is suffering in silence and you don't want to necessarily say what it is, text eight seven zero five five one one six zero eight. Just text the word silence and you will be responded to. Um, and you won't have to suffer alone in silence. I did wanna make that plea for October awareness. Second thing, I, I want to make a public, just give a public thank you. On March nineteenth, I suffered a mild stroke, uh, amongst other things. This is my first time talking about this publicly. Many of my constituents, um, both of my sons, Jeremy and William, being there every single step of the way and for the commissions that I sent on. The Personnel Commission, Fire Commission, A and P, in my absence, thank you all for stepping in and doing what needed to be done. Uh, I finished therapy. I, it's, it's been a daily, daily walk. Things are much better, so hopefully I'll be back in stride, back in meetings. And just wanted to make that public, uh, thank you, Mayor. You were there, you know, um, thanks. So I just wanted to say thank you. And that's, that's all I wanna say, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hutchinson. Uh, Councilwoman Crum?
I just wanted to add to, uh, what Councilor Hutchinson said on domestic violence. Families in Transition, uh, does a really good job, uh, dealing with this. Janetta Gilliam and Cassie Rutledge. So if you have anybody that you suspect or anybody, because a lot of these victims do not speak up.
They don't.
And, uh, just contact one of those two people and, uh, they will, they will explore that and they have a really good program there, Families in Transition.
All right.
Yes.
Any other announcement? Also, I wanna say this is Breast Counsel Awareness Month, so to all the ladies, make sure you get yourself checked out. You know, early detection is the best time to, uh, prevent. Breast Counsel. Um, is that everyone?
I'd like to send out a condolence out to the Wolf Brothers. They lost their brother. And also to Chris Will Brown family.
I do have one thing to say. I, I'm not trying to be controversial or mean or anything of that nature because that's not me. But I, I, I do, I did save the, uh, list of people that are on various commissions. This is January twenty twenty-two, Public Works. Charles Willis, Lorraine Mohammed, James Holt, Willis Monday, Melanie Hutchinson. And that's what we got at the beginning of the year and the, that's, these are the people that are on the commission. And as far as I know, it has not been changed.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Uh, Mayor, Mayor, please. Thank you. Please. Thank you, Ms. Mohammed, for, for acknowledging the list. And as you say, that the list was made at the beginning of the year. As well at the beginning of the year, I talked with the mayor concerning being on Public Works. I had a conflict schedule that I could not make Public Works. He and I spoke and, 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 in his defense, Mayor, I truly believe you, you and I talked about it, but we didn't follow up. I didn't follow up and you may have just, it may have slipped your mind. I ask you, Mayor, and you may not remember this, it was in January, if it was possible, if you could switch myself and Dr. Garrett. And because I had not heard anything, I thought that that was done and I was under the impression that Dr. Bruce was on Public Works. So again, I know I've been, now listen, I've been asked him with a whole lot of stuff, but to make record of something that I know, uh, I was not intentionally trying to be asking for, I, just as you made the point of saying, I was asking in that meeting, I wanted to go on record to say, to my knowledge, I was asked to be removed from Public Works. So I do wanna let you.
Councilwoman Hutchinson, thank you. Let me ask you, Dr. Bruce, could you serve on, could you, can serve on the remainder? Dr. Bruce will, will serve on that, that body.
And Dr. Bruce.
Thank you. We're gonna move from there. We have, uh, a good group of individuals here. Oh, Ms. Patricia?
I'm just speaking on behalf of purchasing and clerk's office. We are trying to get a handle on the January Arkansas municipal lead. Uh, we need to know definitely if we will be going because we can get a discount. And so we're asking you to ensure, make sure you can go. And we will send out all the information after, uh, Mr. Johnson gets everybody registered and we'll get the information too. So we do need to head campus soon as possible. Some of you haven't done it. Appreciate it. And we'll be offering it by soon. So if you cannot go in person, uh, we will put you on till you ask.
Thank you so much. Uh, we got a great group, a good group of looking, a good-looking group of people here. Now, you, you, you make the group look good by running back to your seat now. Uh, we have our twenty twenty-two Leadership Class. We're gonna ask, uh, Ms. Emily Scarborough, will you come up, please, and, and let them introduce themselves? We normally will let you all come up, but y'all, I think y'all may have, be a little wiser. It's just safe to say, if we let the, the younger people come up, so.
Yeah, if you don't mind, they can just stand where they're at. Our group is really diverse this year. We've covered a lot of industries, representatives from healthcare, education, a couple from city government departments, law enforcement, police, entrepreneurs, small business owners. So it's gonna be interesting this year. Um, and there, we're just plugging them in to let them see where they need to go for resources, what you guys do, what's appropriate, what's protocol. Um, and we can start on, uh, this end with our hotelier in the area.
My name is Shawna Reinhardt. I'm the General Manager of TruBay Hilton here in West Memphis. I serve on the board for West Memphis A and P. I'm on the board for Families in Transition and I'm the president this year for the President's Chamber of Business.
All right. The best.
Hello, everybody. My name is Trish Shawna. I work for the city of West Memphis Human Resources Department. I'm the Human Resources Assistant, well, one of the, the Human Resources Assistant. Uh, by the way, we are having a job fair for the city of West Memphis. Next Tuesday from three to five, we have a lot of positions available, so spin everyone out, come see me. Um, that's about it.
You work for a pretty good city.
I'm Lori Wilson and I'm the Executive Director of the Biddy Parks Child Safety Center.
Okay, very good, very good.
Hi, everyone. I'm Shirley Moore, owner of Morris Tax and Look-Keeping Service and also I'm adding payroll in January, so.
All right.
Tax, payroll, look-keeping, see Shirley.
I'm Kayne Abel. I'm the Library Media Specialist at West Memphis High School.
Cause I swore you was Emily when you came in.
Good afternoon. I'm the Reverend Doctor Scott Trotter, uh, retired minister with the Episcopal Church, doing, uh, part-time work, um, and thoroughly enjoying, uh, we came back to us and this would be close to grandchildren. And I am thoroughly enjoying.
I know. I know my kids.
Hello, I'm Sandra Phillips. I'm practice administrator for Grant Farm Healthcare. I'm also a grant researcher, writer for Crenden County. Um, I serve on Main Street for our Red Friends and also on the Community Television Foundation.
You say you see the what? You say you do what?
I didn't see it.
Very clean assistant for our chief of the West Memphis Department.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Queen McNamara and I'm the one and only with the West Memphis Police Department.
All right.
Hello, I'm Lakeever Patterson. I work at ASU Missoula. I'm an academic coach.
All right. It's a good group.
Matthew Jerron, I'm currently, uh, sergeant with the Criminal Investigation Division at the West Memphis Police Department.
Hello, my name is Kim Raines. I'm the head nurse of the Surgery Department at Crenden. Yes, we do surgery up there. We do not do emergency surgery, but we do surgery up there. Also on breast cancer awareness, our, um, Radiology Department is staying open from seven a.m. to seven p.m. Tuesdays through Fridays for the month of October.
And then you have Tori.
Hi, everybody. I'm Sarah here in finance for this video. But that's our lovely group. We would like to thank all of our employees. Thank you guys for letting us borrow them and gain insight and connect them further into the community so that they can help us connect dots and resources to citizens and, and businesses and services. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Emily. Give all of you all a big round of applause. This is a very diverse group, like you said, and I know all of these individuals and I think they're doing amazing jobs right here in the city of West Memphis within our county. So thank you all for being a part of this. Uh, we got one more, all the business. Councilwoman, what you saying?
He's just going to the Public Works this meeting.
All right, uh, can I get a motion in a second, George Jerron?
No, move.
All the favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? We all?